But is it legal for us to let them use our equipment, pay money? That's my question.
Well, the que- I mean, we've got this agreement with Southwestern. We've been doing it, you know, is it legal or not?
I mean, you know, what we went through, we were a month ago.
You know, we had to stop Kyle.
Yeah. That's what it is. If you left one, you'd go let another.
Maybe if we wait a little longer and see if we do get some guidance, some- I- because we're misunderstanding that we're going to get a reentry plan from the State Department?
If- if- the only problem with that is if we wait past July one, they're going to have to make alternative arrangements to get fifty vehicles serviced that are typically serviced, fifty or so serviced. There won't be time to find anybody to do that now. Get- try to get a tire plug lately, try to get into a garage. So it's going to be a huge undertaking, I would think, from the Southwestern Community Council side, to find someone to do this. I mean, imagine four dedicated mechanics working six weeks. Where are you going to find that at now? I mean, maybe it's easy. I don't know, Fred, I- I didn't understand that there was profit to Jerry, I mean, to the students, I would understand. I mean, I have no problem with that if they're getting on the job training, getting paid to work in the summer outside of school term. Even for Jerry, personally, I don't have a problem with it. I don't know what the numbers are, but I know how much Jerry gives back to that program.
I agree with you a hundred and ten percent.
And I- you know, part of the- the self-sufficiency of the program is him doing things like this. And if, I- I mean, I'll- I'll bet there are a lot of things that he buys during the years. I know I've had a lot of work, I can do a lot of work on my cars over there because, quite frankly, I trust the work he does, I know it's going to be done right. You get an invoice and it shows what the labor charge is and part charge and everything, and you get a copy of it, and the kids are just right on. So, e- anyway, I mean, I- I'm- I didn't know, Fred didn't know, that- that it was not, the profits weren't funnel back in. I don't have a problem with Jerry making something, or that the kids in this environment, because I assume the kids he hired, the kids are going to be in the program next year. Right? Or kids that graduated.
It could be seniors or graduates.
Yeah, or people that have graduated and need this on-the-job training. I- I mean, it's just, it's been a great program. Can't imagine the amount of money. It's that great. I- I mean, I do see a difference between this and the situation Kyle, particularly if these are students who are going to be his students next year working, that are getting hands-on training, or they're getting, students have graduated that are getting specialized training that while they live to go on in their field. It's different than a, it's not like Jerry's creating a sideline business, totally different from what he's teaching the kids.
Oh, I agree.
Uh, this is in furtherance of the program. I mean, i- if it brings cars in, if the work they do on these vehicles brings other people's cars in, they somewhere to mouth, and it helps the program, the nine months a year schools in. But.
Well, the other months of the year, where do the funds go? Are they handled any differently?
I mean, all the work that they do at the school during the school year goes right into the program.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so there's a little difference in the, how the funds come in.
But, you know, uh.
Yeah, he works on every vehicle all year round. Well, but then the monies that- that come in are remaining.
Yeah, right, go right into the program, yeah. But this is a special program in the summer months. And Rowdy's right, then, you know, sixteen years, he started out here, I can remember, you know, that first year when he was in this building.
Now, I- I just think if we wait, Jeff, to see if we get a reentry plan, that it's going to miss this window.
Well, I have the agreement. The agreement's ready, right with the board?
Well, but I- I think as a board, we need you to reach out to someone higher up and say, we've had this ongoing program, this is what it encompasses. It's going to start July one, run four, five, or six weeks, four people, appropriate social distancing, masking if necessary, um.
I don't care to make that phone call, but I'm telling you what the response is going to be.
Well, if the response is going to be it's up to your local board, that's fine.
Right.
But I- I think, you know, I don't know how you all feel, but I- I'd like to have someone say it's up to your local board.
I'll make the phone call.
Before we undertake and do it, and- and get another hammer dropped on our heads for something.
I don't know, I mean, they may say that, but I don't know how they can say that. Because what makes that different than recovery? If we thought it was a great idea to have better recovery, you know, let's bring a few kids in they really need it, you know, what's the difference?
They're not going to want to make that- that call.
Oh, I agree. I think that's exactly the answer that you will give, but at least we'll have it, I mean, an email would be better, then we'd have a response and writing, right? I'd just like to have that, so that we, you know, I mean, God forbid, you're working on fifty cars, there could be somebody bringing those cars over there. These three kids and Jerry that are working on them are going to be out and about this summer. And just like we, I mean, you were talking about before the meeting started, or we were talking about before the meeting started, even under best-case circumstances, someone who has no reason to believe they are ill, can be ill, never have symptoms, can affect everyone around them. So, I- I mean, from my perspective, and maybe I'm too- too liberal on this point, not conservative enough on it, I think you do the best that you can do while you still try to preserve some semblance of life.
Just make if you look into that.
I will.
That just gives you a purview of what we're going to look at here in a month or so.
Oh, I know, it's all going to be dropped back on our heads.
Well, I mean.
And your head. And another month, so. Give me right the dick of it.
Mr. Midkiss, Kelly.
You picked up on that, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Well, I pointed that out. I hope he picked up on it.
It's taking me doing that.
Okay. All right, well, that's well taken, Mr. Midkiss, when we look into that.
Okay, Mr. Priestley, I have something.
Mr. Welbourn.
Um, I got this call from a lady that, uh, she's- she's really stressed out. Over the years, uh, there's been a combined reunion of, uh, classes due by high school, we are aware of that. She, unfortunately for her, is in charge of it this year. And she has the problem of getting, uh, food servers, uh. She's also got the problem of, uh, scheduling, uh, the people that are going to attend and so forth and so on. To make everything brief, uh, I know we can't give her a, a firm answer right now, but with all things remaining as they are regarding the virus and the spacing and so forth, uh, do you feel it would be wise for me to advise her to forget the whole thing? Or do you think, with all things being what they are now, she might be able, uh, to space the people out in the gymnasium? And along with that, she feels about very many people are going to attend, probably, uh, less than a hundred.
Well, right now, is it can't have more than twenty-five? Very busy, uh, schedule.
And what date's she looking at for this?
This would be the first Saturday in October.
Well, things could really change, you have ideas.
Right now, there's, I mean, right now, the rule is no more than twenty-five, right?
Right, but by October, I mean, you're going to have to go or I'm not going to change. What, it's just a matter of probability when she would have to.
She would, she tells me she would have to know something, uh, by the first of July. She can't go beyond that.
I don't think we, well, one.
We can't give her a firm.
Well, first of all, it's a principle, it's going to improve the use of that building.
Right.
Uh, but I don't see how.
It's something of this nature, you'd have to involve the local health department to give them the current guidelines on the situation.
I mean, I would say no, based upon what we have now.
That's the way I feel, too.
Certain things do change.
I don't think she would be terribly disappointed if- if it doesn't happen.
Just let her take care of it again.
She's actually scared to death. If it's the first time to do it.
This could be good practice for next year.
Yeah. Well, I would advise you.
Yeah, I think you understand the rationale.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, anything else you want?
I've got something. It's that time of year, not Christmas either. Uh, next board meeting, we're going to do the superintendent's evaluation, we're going to culminate that process. As you know, back in September, we set Mr. Midkiss's goals. Uh, here recently, Mr. Midkiss shared with us how he had addressed those goals. So, at our next board meeting, we'll meet the executive session to, uh, rank Mr. Midkiss's performance this past year. And then, following that, we'll give a public statement as to the results of that. And I'm just giving those to you, so you can load them all over and return them on the sixth day, please. That's all I have. Mr. Midkiss, you give me that book.
I've got a few items here.
Ah, I know, that's that book.
Uh, I'll be quick. Uh, the first one is, uh, tomorrow's the last day of employment for our two-hundred-day employees. It's also an OS day, which means that no one will be working tomorrow. So, you need something from the central office, there will not be anyone here. I got even better news about the bleachers. I think last week I told you that it looked like they were going to be here by first of September. We got an email late last week that those bleachers are now ready to be shipped. And if you get an opportunity to stop out, Sean, if you've seen the gym yet, be careful, because on that you can walk in that door.
I know.
Those guys are tough.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, uh, it's beautiful. It's- it's- it's that same wood that we had at Guy Valley on the floor, and, uh, they just finished painting, and it's- it's beautiful. So, the next step is painting the walls. I talked to Mrs. Eppleman today, I think Arndt Strong and some volunteers are going to help out with that, uh, activity. And we get the bleachers in there, it's going to look like a brand new gym, it's beautiful. So, that was good news. I- I'm going to mention this, I mentioned it before the board meeting, and Sean, I think you may have already posted this on social media, but just a reminder that there'll be no meal delivery next week. Uh, beginning the week of June the fifteenth, we will transition to just our summer feeding sites, which again is, uh, Duval, Link County High School, West Hamlin, and Harts. And we'll still be doing the five meals, the boxes, uh, this summer. We, uh, are going, we did get a bid, accepted a bid, by the same company, from the same that we've been using, this compass, uh, food company that's located in Charlotte, North Carolina. I think I shared with you all that we were paying thirty-one dollars a box, you know, right? Of course, you know, that's reversible, and that was the state negotiating that price, you know, for that, uh, on that deal. We partnered with six counties, Canal County was one of them, uh, and submitted a bid, and it came in at twenty-two dollars a box. So, we're pretty good negotiators, eh?
Find your net share.
Yeah, so nine, nine dollars, uh, cheap, a box, it just tells you.
Be blurty as long as.
Hey, twenty-two dollars, look.
Blurty's okay?
I have a problem with blurting, I have a problem. I just don't think anybody wants to eat the same sandwich five days in a row. Throw a cheese sandwich in there, throw a ham sandwich.
Mix it up.
Yeah, four belongings and a ham's fine, I just don't want to see five belongings a box.
And finally, and I'm glad we got a meeting tonight, uh, is- is the documents that I had sent you Friday from Bernie Dolan, regarding this, uh, restart for athletics. And to the left up to individual county boards of education to determine whether or not we want to participate. And that's next week, I mean, this- this window opens June the eighth. And I don't think we've had a chance to look at the document. Jim, you have a call?
I don't know where the bill is put.
I've talked to the high school administration today, because they're getting questions from their coaches. But it- it does say that phase one and phase two, and it can only be conditioning and strict training and can agility. Phase one, coach can- can only have the kids for one hour, open. And it's my understanding, and Bernie Dolan today had a phone call, a teams meeting with principals across the state, athletic directors, and he even went on to say that if the kid, if they participate in three or four different sports, this is non-sport specific, and a child or student can only participate for one hour per day. So, they can't be with this coach for an hour, this coach over here later today for another hour. It's limited to just one hour a day of contact. Um, it has to be outside the first two weeks. I do believe when you get into phase three, that it can be inside, although they recommend it possible to stay outside. But the final decision, uh, whether or not to participate and open up our facilities, uh, even outdoors, is- is up to, like you said. And I- I- I know we have coaches that are chomping at the bit, I know we've got athletes out there that are chomping at the bit, and they're ready.
Now, when you say it's not in our facility, are you also speaking of playgrounds and all facilities?
No, it wouldn't be our playgrounds, this- this would just be athletics. And I know this is coinciding with the governor's, uh, restart, uh, I think, is it Lurie? Is he going to let baseballs, softball, and soccer, or, Sean?
Yeah, I think so, June, June eighth, yeah.
So, this coincides with that timeframe. Uh, but it's the first two weeks, uh, the recommended dates, June the eighth through the nineteenth, students in groups or pods of ten or less are to be assigned and their names recorded. And they are to stay for social distancing, as it is in place, face masks, coverings are recommended when it's appropriate. Of course, you know, during the times that they're going to be conditioning, strict training, they wouldn't be able to wear masks, I wouldn't think. No sport-specific activities or equipments allowed during the first two weeks. And again, a limit of one hour of activities per day, per pod.
And then, is that just for certain sports?
It's just for athletes, it can be, it's non-sport specific the first two weeks.
Wrestling, cheerleading, anything.
Basketball, basketball, doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. And then, when you get into weeks three and four, uh, that's when, at that point, you can, um, have students inside.
Let me see, do you read this the same way I do?
What are you adding, Brad?
Oh, well, I'm kind of looking at phase one, two, and three.
Okay.
Under phase one, third dot, student groups of pods of ten or less seem to be assigned, sign the names recorded. Come down to the same thing, third dot in phase two. Same language, but up to twenty-five students allowed in designated areas, turn to phase three. Um, and it says, where's that? I don't know, one, two, three, or about to fifty. Up to fifty, so, as I'm reading this, tell me if I'm, if we're on the same page. For the first two-week period, say you're, when you soccer, boys soccer, you can only have ten students at a time, ten soccer players on the field at a time. But in phase two, you could have up to twenty-five, so long as you have them broken down into separate areas of less than ten in each group. And for phase three, you could have five ten-person pods.
Right.
So, if a coach takes advantage of phase one, which recommended dates of June the eighth to nineteen, then they're going to have to have multiple, assuming they got forty students that participate, they're going to have to have four sessions, four one-hour-long sessions scattered throughout the day, to get all forty of those kids in, right? Rather than having four groups of ten spaced out over a soccer field, you can't have more than ten during the first two-week period, right?
I know that Bernie explained that today in his phone call. Paul, I spoke to Paulie Smith today. Now, it's her understanding, based upon what he shared, is these kids, these, let's say these twenty-five kids in weeks three and four could be on the football field. They could all, twenty-five, be out there, but they've got to be separated.
Right, they got, oh, but that- that's in, that's in week two, that's weeks three and four, phase two.
They can't, they're not to intermingle, so.
Right.
Pod ten, you know, those ten students over here shouldn't be having any contact with these ten students, because if someone gets sick in pod one, then that group's going to be.
Back in pod two.
You know, and if you've got someone that ends up getting sick over here in pod two that may have been infected by someone in pod one, then you have a problem, you know? Because they shouldn't have been having contact with one another.
But in phase one, you only have ten at a time.
That's all.
So, the coaches need to understand that, take football, for example. If you have, I don't think they get that kind of turnout anymore, but if you had forty players, you would have to, or forty-one players, you'd have to have five hours a day to accommodate forty-one players. The coach would.
You're right.
And they would have to do that to make sure that every kid that wanted to participate had the option.
And the same ten would have to stay together all the time.
Yep.
Same ten kids, same coach.
Yeah.
Has to stay with those kids. And got to have, you know, disinfectant, if they're using any equipment, hand sanitizer.
Have you talked to any of the coaches, do they really want to do this?
Well, that was my response, I thought, you know, the coaches will see this and not have an interest, but according to Paulie, we have coaches that are ready, they want to do this. So, uh, I've only spoken to one other county, because this is so new, and there was, there wasn't a board that met last night in another county. And that board had decided that they, they're going to follow these guidelines, they're going to do this. I don't, you know, I don't know what other counties are doing with this.
And now, does this seem to, I mean, is this all sports, baseball, basketball, and everything?
Yep.
And what are they going to all, what do they say?
I mean, you could theoretically, Fred, under the way this is set up, you could have students that play only baseball, only basketball, only soccer, and only football, working out together, because you cannot do anything sport-specific under these guidelines. It's only general conditioning. So, you could, you wouldn't have to have the football coach and the football assistants only over a football player. You could have, I mean, you could have, for this, you could have boys and girls together theoretically to make up your ten-person pods, because to adhere to the letter of this document, you can't have sport-specific training. I mean, it clearly says, where's that? Non-sport-specific activities to, in order to improve conditioning, strength, and agility.
But you're- you're not going to be inside.
Right, it'll be outside.
That's what, what, would it all be different?
Where are you going to be at? Yeah, but you could use, of course, here, you could use the Lions Club field, you could use our new football soccer man field at the high school.
And of course, that includes girls' warthog.
Soccer field, baseball field.
And that'd be up to coaches, I mean, I- I almost think.
Out on the front lawn, because I thought they could run around the building. I mean, you know, I'm trying to picture this in my mind.
Well, I'm just thinking, so, so what happens here if, and I'm just fooling, I- I may even make up sports, so nobody gets mad, but let- let's say we had girls' racquetball and boys' tennis. And the boys' tennis team was going to practice, and the coach was going to practice, but the girls' racquetball coach says, not interesting. I don't want to condition my kids, but some of the girls' racquetball players want to condition. Wouldn't we have to accommodate them under this, with another coach, another program? So, do the coaches need to look at this as a, I don't even think about this, we're starting to talk in detail about it, but rather than, than a soccer coach handling soccer kids, be they male or female, do the coaches need to all put their heads together and come up with a comprehensive two-week, second two-week program to, uh, accommodate the kids to strengthen agility, et cetera, no matter what sort of sport.
That's what the administration of, at the high school has in mind.
Yeah, I think that's the.
If we're going to move forward with this, then they're going to have to.
Things, God, I don't know what they can do, but I mean, just me thinking, you don't know how much thought I've given, five minutes worth here, but it seems to me that- that with the distancing, you're going to need all your coaches and all your assistants and all your auxiliaries and volunteers to have a pod, a pod of ten staying six feet apart within that pod. That takes up a hundred and twenty, I mean, sixty by sixty, right?
Right.
Well, I guess.
No, no, it wouldn't.
Yeah, it would.
What'd you say?
If you've got ten people and they have to stay six feet apart.
Oh, okay.
You got to have six feet, I mean, I guess, it's only sixty feet in a row theoretically, to stay six feet apart, so you could line them up, you know, ever three, ever three, three and a half yards.
Stationary or all moving.
That goes back to what Mr. Curry just said, how many coaches are really going to be interested?
But then, what's a pod? I mean, okay, so you take ten and you put them six feet, and you put them on the goal line, you put four down the goal line, six feet apart, and then you have three rows of that to get your total number of ten. Do you skip ten yards and you have another pod? And you skip ten yards, you have another pod?
You could.
I mean, I.
But what are they doing in these pods?
Well, that's, you can have, if you establish what, that's what I'm saying, what's pod? I mean, if you had ten of these pods on a football field, you'd have one coach on a podium in the middle directing house settings.
If I want my pod to do sprints, they can't go into your pod area.
Doesn't matter, you- you have one coach over all the kids that are on the field.
Everybody has to sprint at the same time, then, all the pods.
Well, you sprint them all apart, you have them sprinting all around the school, ten yards at a time.
I'm thinking about watching this.
This is going to be the actual watch and practice, and play.
Oh, I don't know. Those are responsible for disinfecting all the equipment.
That's the coach, the coach. I said, there has to be a plan to make sure that we've got everything in place we need.
Any non-sport-specific equipment? Now, that's a.
Non-sport equipment.
Non-sport-specific, okay, that- that's okay, equipment should be disinfected for each individual use. What's a non-sport-specific equipment?
Weights.
But that's not outside, unless you move them out there, yeah? Okay, I mean, you could have a blocking sled to be non-sport-specific, since it builds full body strength. Poles, things, the ROTC climbs, over ropes.
Jump ropes.
Jump ropes.
Yeah.
Coats.
Dance football, basketball, soccer balls.
Not supposed to.
Yeah.
Things happen.
I mean, you have a volleyball, you know, you have a soccer ball. You have a big volleyball out there, you know, a little bit heavier than normal.
How can you get that basketball?
Yeah, I think this needs to be, I don't think we can require a coach to do this. I think it has to be voluntary on the coach's part, it has to be voluntary, the athletes need to understand that whether they participate or do not participate, it has no impact on their ability to participate when school reopens and a sport is officially reopened for- for participation.
Isn't that always the case?
No, it's not. It's a solution.
It is the case, but they sometimes make it the case.
That may be disstated.
Right.
Law on the subject, but that's not the way it's carried out in practice, trust me. I have kids in these schools, I have kids in these schools.
But I said, that's the way, shoot, they aren't supposed to be required. But I also know what you're saying, if you're not there, I'm not with play.
Well, in- in years past, when teams could practice together, you, there's a lot of benefit to all the team members being there during this early transition, you build team cohesiveness. So, I understand, yeah, you want everybody there, you can get there. Um, but in this situation, I mean, heck, our volunteer employees that were coming in to, you know, handle the food service, it was pure volunteers, people that were willing to take that risk, we couldn't require anybody to come in and do that. In this situation, I think the coaches, coaches shouldn't want to do this, they should want to, but if they opt not to, I don't think that- that we can do anything about it. I don't, I think it ought to be clear to the students that there is no penalty for non-discrimination, none. And coaches need to understand that. For real, we really mean it this time.
I'm listening.
We really mean it. And that means, I want to make sure the assistant soccer coaches must wear a mask?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Definitely the head soccer coach.
Indeed.
All the time.
If I'm big enough.
Okay. So, what are you asking, do we want to do this, is that what you're?
That's all I'm asking.
It's like, recommended when appropriate and should be worn at all times, except for participating in high-intensity aerobic activity. That's, that's the explicit statement. Recommended when appropriate and should be worn at all times, except, who writes these things? I'm going to shut up, I'm making the obvious.
If they're running.
What's that mean?
If they're running, they should not.
No, 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 that's not what it means at all.
Well, they shouldn't, though.
Well, I mean, that's logical.
Think about Sean over here, coaching, and he's thirty feet from the kids, or forty, does he need to wear a mask?
Yes.
No.
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 He's hard enough to understand.
We're going to put it in there specifically that he must.
Recommended when appropriate, that's the language I'm going to read, recommended when appropriate.
Oh, I read that loud, how many times?
If he gets employed, he may not even.
I would almost guess a lawyer wrote this, because lawyers sometimes don't write things clearly so they can get paid later to reinterpret it. If you write something clearly, everybody knows what the rule is, you, you, but, you know, you write it word-for-word.
Yeah, they could probably, somebody, uh, they could probably sue somebody if they didn't do it exactly right.
Probably so.
With this kind of language.
That is, for me, the liability aspect that comes along with this, because what if you're not following these guidelines to the team? You didn't disinfect the equipment, you know, uh, you didn't use hand sanitizer, you wasn't social distancing. You were supposed to be in five separate pods, and you ended up in a pod of fifty.
So, what do the kids do before they, before they set the pods up? And- and after the pods are set up? What kids want, kids are going to congregate, that's what kids are supposed to do, they congregate. So, at one minute, till the session starts at one, there will be a group of fifty over here hanging, or forty-five of the fifty will be over here hanging out, then they're going to break into their pods once those pods are assigned. Realistically, you can't.
They'll break up the sanitization.
They'll break up the sanitization, or whatever the word is, for those pods, they'll all be contaminated, then they'll have to go home.
I, I mean, realistically, we're banking on anybody that does this. Just hoping that people do the best they can, because you can't, I don't, you'd have to have an army to enforce these guidelines, it's written. And even then, you don't know what's gonna happen.
I wanna ask a question. Is this just a high school?
You walk out there, and they're all together, six spread out, six...